Okay, this is Board of Education meeting for the Hyde Park Central School District, October 10th, 2019. Can I have a motion to enter into executive session to discuss matters pertaining to the medical, financial, credit, or employment, promotion, demotion, discipline, suspension, dismissal, or removal of a particular person or corporation and collective negotiations pursuant to Article 14 of the Civil Service Law?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? We're now in executive session. So, welcome to the Hyde Park Board of Education meeting, October 10th. Can everyone please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Oh, I love Rachel moved.
I love everybody moving around.
We have one agenda modification, adding 11.8, support staff retirement, accept the resignation for the purpose of retirement from Henry Hubbard, bus driver with transportation, effective the close of business, October 11th, 2019. Mr. Hubbard has been with the district since May of 2007. Can I have a motion to accept the amendment?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Motion carries. Can I have a motion to accept the agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Motion carries. Okay, upcoming events, there'll be no school on Monday, October 14th. And on Tuesday, October 15th, the Hyde Park Education Foundation meeting at Haviland Middle School at 6:00 PM. On Wednesday, October 16th, DLT meeting at the district office at 6:30 PM. And on Thursday, October 24th, at North Park Elementary will be the next Board of Ed meeting. This is note that this location has changed after the calendar was printed. And for Pride.
Good evening. So, this week for Pride, I wanted to focus on what's been happening in Violet Avenue. So, they started off their school year with a mindfulness assembly and the guest speaker, Brian Chevalier, who's a local songwriter and artist. And he's worked with the school before by having the students from previous years write songs that are then taught to the current students. Ms. Gonzalez, the school's principal, says that it was a nice way to set the tone for the new school year. Next, on October 18th, from 6:00 PM to 8:00 PM, the PTA of Violet Avenue is hosting a harvest night celebration. Ms. Gonzalez says that this was all, this is always a family and staff favorite. And I volunteered last year and the turnout was great. The kids were very excited to be there, to get their faces painted and play the games. So, that should be really exciting. And then lastly, on October 31st, they plan to have a book-a-ween where each class chooses like their favorite book and they dress up to match the theme of it. And at the end of the day, there'll be a little parade for the kids to show off their costumes and how they dressed up. So, that should be a pretty exciting day for them. And in FDR, they just, we just finished our Spirit Week successfully. The seniors won, but honestly, the competition was great this year. All the classes really stepped it up and worked really hard. Sadly, we lost at the homecoming game, but FDR certainly gave it their best. And as for the dance, this year, we had the most students in attendance than years before. So, it's really great to see participation keep rising throughout the school. Also, last Thursday, the FDR swim team swam against Cornwall with 10 girls on our team getting their new personal bests. And Kathryn Graham setting, getting a 1.07, .12 in her 100 breast stroke, setting herself first in section nine and fifth out of the entire state. So, that's certainly a feat.
And I think we have something to show for...
Yes, the, at FDR, the, the staff prepared a flash mob surprise dance during the pep rally. So, the students had no idea this was going to happen. And it started by dragging Mr. Party off the stage, you know, and just like pulling him off. And I really wanted to show this to the board for a number of reasons. First and foremost, you know, just the school spirit that the staff and, and all our schools, you know, the, the staff is really great about these types of things. But this is a room full of the entire student body and just hearing their reaction to watching the staff members, I thought it was worth looking at during Pride. I keep watching it.
I've looked at it a couple of times.
Our new SRO and our new Assistant Principal. So, I would've personally selected a shorter song if I was going to be in it, but that was 40 staff members who, you know, and, you know, everybody just had the time and the availability to get together. And again, it was a long song, so that's a lot to learn. And Mr. Party certainly sent wonderful thank you letters to everybody involved. So, I was sorry to miss that, but we had another major event going on in the school district. I mentioned it at the last meeting. We had an, we hosted a naturalization ceremony and that was taking place at the same time. There were over 105 people who were naturalized that day from 42 different countries. Everybody was there. Brad Kendall did an amazing job hosting the event. Judge Brands, Bill Grady, Sue Serino, Mark Molinaro, Ryan Wade, our Director of Vocal Music and Choir, I always get his title wrong, did an outstanding performance. He did the Star Spangled Banner a cappella and then later on, played the piano and led the singing of "America the Beautiful." So, thank you to Ryan. I sent him some really nice feedback. I gave the welcome address and it's, it's a very moving ceremony to see 105 people from 42 different countries. So, it, that's where I was. So, it was just as moving and we were happy to host. I was very pleased that Brad Kendall recognized all of the staff at Haviland Middle School and including our work with our SRO, our Town of Hyde Park. Paul Faziola was man in the fort that day. He did an unbelievable job. All our facilities guys helped with setting it up, arranging the parking. The amount of people who took the time to say what a wonderful experience it was to be in our school and how well organized, just was kudos to all the staff who made it happen. And I can't tell you how many times people actually said to me, "Are the kids here today?" It's like, yes, the entire student body, but we had organized it that we could use the middle school auditorium and, and have 105 people plus all the guests. And, oh, and the keynote address was Ms. New York, who is from Millbrook, and she is quite accomplished. She's a professor at Dutchess Community College. She has five master's degree in various STEM areas, science, technology, engineering, and math. And her keynote was just unbelievable and, you know, her humanitarian efforts are really noteworthy. So, I did get a picture with her just, because I had to, you know. But, no, she was, she was just wonderful. I just learned that our golf team is now in contention for the Mahals. They just beat New Paltz. Yay! The last time they beat New Paltz, they beat them by one stroke. So, it was a little bit better today. So, congratulations to the golf team who will be moving on. And a special shout out to HPTA. We have some HPTA members here. They hold their annual raffle, which is, well, sometimes they do different fundraisers. They hold an annual fundraiser to raise money for our local libraries. And this year, Clinton, Hyde Park, and Statsburg Libraries all receive $1,700 donation from the HPTA through their fundraiser. So, thank you, HPTA, for supporting the local libraries. They're great partners in literacy for all of our students. And that's all I have for Pride.
Anybody else have pride?
Well, I just wanted to say, as a new board member, I just wanted to kind of express a personal pride, you know, how welcoming everybody has been on the board and in the community and how much of a great opportunity this is. I think the school year has really started very, very well. You know, thank you again to our teachers, our administrators, our SROs, our personnel. And just again, thank you for having such a welcome to a new board member.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Okay, going on to Superintendent's report.
And nothing other than what is on our agenda planned for this evening.
Okay. And now to our external auditors' report from Marvin and Company. Linda?
So, Chris Haley is here with us tonight. Chris is the audit manager. Is that the right title? Yeah. So, he, he's here for most of the audit, but oversees the work of the auditors. And he did meet with the audit committee a couple of weeks ago.
So, you should have a one-page kind of summary that I'm going to go through electronically. If you've never seen the actual financial statement document, it's about 78 pages, a lot of dense reading material there. So, I'm going to spare you all of that and just kind of give you the highlights since we, we spent about an hour and a half with the audit committee going through all of the detail. So, as Linda mentioned, we were engaged to perform the audit of the school district for the 1819 year. So, I'll start right with if you were to go to pages one through three on that financial statement document, that's going to be our auditor's report. And on page two, you'll see our opinion is that the financial statements are fairly presented in all material respects. So, that's a clean opinion. That's what you're looking to have. So, we did issue that clean opinion. The next section of the financial statements is management's discussion and analysis. That's a really good, high-level summary. It's a great spot to go if you have no, if you don't have enough time to read through the entire thing. I'd encourage you to at least look through that section. It's only about 10 pages, but it does have some, some more non-financial information in there that kind of gives more of a picture of what happened during the year and what's going to be happening going forward. The next section is the B section, and that's really the, the meat of your financial statements. The first two pages of that, B1 and B2, are your district-wide financial statements. Those two pages are on the full accrual basis of accounting. So, what that means is that that takes into account all of your long-term assets and all of your long-term liabilities. So, typically, you probably get more information on the fund level basis, which is really a current-year focus. And that's going to be on pages B3 and B4. But on pages B1 and B2, some of the highlights that I want to point out, your net position at the end of the year was a deficit of $148 million. That sounds like a scary thing if you have any financial background, but the key thing to remember here is you have a retiree health insurance liability, which is well over $200 million, that you're not allowed to fund by, by law. There's no mechanism to fund that liability. So, that being the case, it's, it's going to create your net position to be in a deficit situation because you can't set any of that money aside. Pages B3 and B4, fairly consistent year over year. The only thing I want to point out here is your, your general fund expenditures did, and transfers did exceed your revenues by about $856,000. But that's really due to your transfer of the capital reserve over to the capital fund to help pay for your ongoing projects. So, operationally, there's nothing, you had a surplus, but if you take into account those transfers, you would see a deficit for the general fund. Starting on page B7, that's the notes to the financial statements. So, if you're looking through the first six pages of the actual financial statements and you had any questions about what those amounts represent or what's maybe going on, that's where a lot of the detailed information is in your financial statements. It'll give you background information, assumptions that go into some of those numbers, and so on and so forth. Page B17, that's going to be the breakout of your reserves. So, if you're curious what money is set aside for what purposes, that's, that's where you would go to find that. Page B38 and 39 breaks out your bond payment schedule. Might be important in budgeting if you're trying to make some decisions, lets you see what, what your future payout schedule is for that. And then page B42 to B45, these are the disclosures related to that retiree health insurance liability. That is your, by far, your largest amount on your financial statements. So, there's a lot of disclosures that go with that. That's a really big actuarial calculation. So, those disclosures just let you know what the underlying assumptions in that calculation are. So, if you wanted more information on that, that's where you would go. Pages C1 and C2 are the budget-to-actual schedules. Those are required by the state. And the only thing I'm going to point out about those is you are about $1.8 million over budget on the revenue side, which is within about 2% of your budget. So, that's pretty spot-on. You know, you want to budget your revenues conservatively so that you're not underestimating those and ending up in a deficit situation. And then your expenses on the general fund side, you are $3.4 million under budget. Again, you're within about 3.5% there. So, those are pretty, pretty spot-on amounts for, for budgeting for a district of this size. As you all, I'm sure, are aware, little things can cause significant increases in some of those costs. So, that, that looks good. Pages E1 and E2, this is another required report that we're required to give. This is the internal, or the external auditor's report on internal control and compliance. And this is required because you're, you're a government and our audit is performed in accordance with government auditing standards. Basically, that lets you know that we are considering your internal controls over financial reporting and over compliance as we do the audit, but we're not going to give an opinion on those internal controls. That being said, if we notice anything that, that seems unusual or things for you to work on, we would bring that to your attention. And we have no, no such items to bring to your attention. So, that's, that's good. The last section is the F section. So, this is your single audit section. So, you expend more than $750,000 in federal awards. So, you're required to have a single audit in accordance with the uniform guidance. Pages F1 and F2 is our report on internal control and compliance for that, for the uniform guidance. And again, we had a, an unmodified opinion on your expenditures of federal awards, which is what you're looking for. That's the clean opinion. And we had no findings to report in this area, which in the, the era of growing complexity, that's, that's something worth noting. I think out of all the districts that we do, we have very few where we don't see any findings in this area, especially as the new, the new requirements keep getting more stringent and more stringent. So, that's certainly a very well, job very well done by everybody involved. You, page F3 and F4 lists out all your federal awards. You expended about $3.3 million in federal dollars during the year. And then F5 is actually a very nice summary of the audit as a whole. It goes down through all the different reports that we, that we gave and the types of opinions lets you know if there are findings, which as we said, in this case, there are not. Lets you know what programs we tested. This year, we tested the special education cluster. So, that was the major program. And again, we had no findings in that area. So, overall, for your financial statement audit, it went very well. No findings, clean opinions on all of our reports. And then we were also engaged to perform the audit of the extra classroom activities fund. We provided a clean opinion on that as well. That is in accordance with the cash basis of accounting. So, if you were to look at that report, you might have some questions about some of the balances or things like that. The thing, key thing to remember with that is that it is cash basis, so it's when the money is coming in and when the money is going out. So, there could be some timing differences based on when that money actually made it into the bank or, or was dispersed from the bank. And then we also will be issuing a management letter for the extra classroom funds that we went through in detail with the audit committee of our findings over those. Overall, relatively insignificant for what we see at, at a lot of other districts. Those activities are carried out by students, so it's very difficult to not have anything in there. That, that letter is based on the state's guidance and not really so much based on what's necessarily practical. And for, for lack of a better term, there, it really is a very stringent set of, of standards. So, obviously, you want to strive to get there, but it's not unusual to see some items in that. So, those were all discussed in detail. And again, nothing, nothing that I would consider unusual there. So, are there any questions?
Okay, thank you very much.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you, Chris. Safe travels.
Thank you.
So, next up is our assessment report from, from Viva?
I think it's this one. So, good evening, everyone. So, this is our annual assessment report. And I'm pleased to see teachers and administrators here along with the board. So, thank you for being here. So, the overview is much the same as in years past. We do that for consistency. So, you can see, these are statewide results, three through eight, math and language arts, as well as regents. And we do include some maps, the measurement of achievement progress or academic progress and, because that's another assessment we do and it seems like it fits in with this report. So, what is different this year is, I know Dr. Rycheck talked to the last board meeting about the three to eight results which are public. And, you know, we are not seeing the growth we'd like to see across the board, though we do have some areas where we are seeing some good growth. You'll hear more about that in the individual building reports where there'll be a lot more detail as to grade levels and areas where we have seen some growth. But overall, we're not seeing what we'd like to see. So, we do have an action plan. So, you know, I know that the board prefers a 10-minute presentation. This is a 43-slide presentation. This is the second one, second slide. So, you know, I'm not going to rush too much, but I think what might work best is that if you have points of confusion about the information, to ask me as we go, but to save any questions about what we're doing about the test results until you have a chance to hear the action plan and what we're doing, that would be helpful. Okay. So, as in prior years, I give just an overall language arts and math for each building in grades three through five. So, here's Netherwood. And again, this is last spring. And what you'll see is no consistent pattern, like at Netherwood, grade three outperformed the other grade levels. In other buildings, you might see a different grade level. There's North Park. Ralph R. Smith.
Just ask, like, what do, what do the percentages mean?
Oh, percentage passing. Thanks for asking. So, that's level three or four. You know, out of 100%. And Violet Avenue. And then it's three through eight testing. Here's Havland, grades six through eight in math and ELA. And I did add a slide this year to sort of explain the 10% outlier for the passing rate for math in eighth grade. And I'll, I'll show you that in a minute, because there is something different here, which is that we do have students who accelerate in math and in science in eighth grade. So, we have the last few years since the opt-out movement really became strong, we do a waiver for these students not to take the statewide test in math and in science. And so, these 22 students who, 100% of them passed the regents exam, which is a high school exam in eighth grade, none of them took the eighth grade test, which, there, there is no equivalent in any of the other three through eight math or ELA exams. So, it, it seemed important to point that out here. And then while we were at it, we, we showed you living environment where 100% of the students also passed. We are talking about and really considering not doing the waiver, which means that these students would be expected to sit for the statewide tests in math and science, but of course, like any other student across the state, they could still refuse the test. So, that's, that's what we're talking about. And it's easy to see that, of course, they would pass probably with a level four. So, here are test refusals. We can see that although they've gone down a bit since the height of the opt-out movement, it's still very high at Havland and somewhat high at Ralph R. Smith. And here's the state average is 16%. So, I show this because it's really important that it becomes less, less dependable as a result to compare ourselves to at 35% of the students. to compare ourselves to if 35% of the students are not taking the exam. And we have no way of knowing how those students would have performed, though statistically students who opt out are usually higher achieving students. So I'll just say that about opt-out for now. Okay. So, you know, I've been asked about our free and reduced eligible rate, which is actually, right, you know, looking at these reports, it's only 1% higher than the county and lower than the state. We have much higher free and reduced lunch populations in our elementary schools, some more than others, really more than twice as high as the district overall rate. And this is our school report card rate. And the reason for this is that the students in middle and high school don't always fill out those forms, so we don't have their eligibility information. So it's also one of the reasons why we have designated all of our elementary schools as Title I and not the middle or high school, because those rates look lower than we know that they really are. Though that could be true for the rest of the state as well, which is why I'm not qualifying it or changing the numbers. That's what they are. Okay. So here's where we compare our district three to five assessment results against the state. And this is part of the reason for our improvement plan, as well, as you'll see. So this is ELA in the district. It's all three, five together. So that's every third, fourth, and fifth grade class in the whole district. And you can see where the light green for the district and the light brown for the state. So we are underperforming in ELA compared to the state and also in math. And just be thinking about the opt-out rate too in the back of your mind as being much higher than the state as well. And here is Havland compared to the state. And here again. So remember the 10% in math and the students not taking that exam. Okay. So I'm going to go into regents. There's quite a few exams, but you can see it pretty quickly. So just like last year, I call it not passed yet because unlike the three to eight test, students can take regents again and again, and in some cases have to until they pass. Algebra I, Common Core Geometry. Algebra II. This is the 11th grade English regents. Living Environment. Chemistry. Earth Science. Physics. U.S. History, Government. Global Ten Transition. And this is something new. The state has not put out their regents results that just happened, so we don't have the 2019 regents. So we compared the statewide regents results from last year, because that's the most recent we have, to ours. So they're not going to match up with the slides you just saw, but what you can see is we outperformed the state in every single regents at FDR. So I'll let you just look at it for a second. So I did this last year and it was helpful. So why this big difference? So what you can see from last year is our overall grade four ELA, we had 30%, 37% of students passing. And then by the time they took the English regents, it was 90%. And I'll show you the same thing in math and algebra. And the most obvious reason for this is that several years back, they changed what they call the cut score for the three through eight test. So our three through eight test used to look pretty much like our regents scores. So our school buildings were in the 60s, 70s, and 80% passing rates. And then the cut scores basically just made a higher level for proficiency, and that's across the state. So although you see that we are underperforming in ELA and math to the state, they're not up in the 90s either. So there's just a big difference between percentage of passing rates in three through eight in New York because of the way it's designed compared to regents. So we show you this to show that, and I'll go into graduation rate in a minute, that, you know, our system is designed and these are the outcomes they have by the time they leave. So we certainly want to improve those three through eight scores, but we also want to put it in perspective as to the whole program, what we offer and how kids leave. And here's the same with overall grade four math compared to when they take Algebra I. And again, that was the pass rate. They're certainly going to have more opportunities to take that algebra exam. Okay. So we have talked about each year, usually at different times, I've brought the UPK data and we use maps because up until this past year, they haven't been old enough to take the statewide tests. So this year, our data looks a little different. So this is compared using maps. And the next slide, I'm going to actually compare it to the students who had UPK originally. This is our first UPK class in 1415. So we get to see how they did in third grade in math and ELA. So they performed a little better in math than in reading compared to their cohorts who didn't go to our UPK program, but overall, they came out the same, about mid-year third grade level. So we had been seeing them about six months ahead. So they seem to have lost their advantage. We're only comparing, you know, the students who are still here in UPK compared to the overall group, some of whom might not have been here all of those years. So it's not an exact connection. And I'll show you the statewide test, too. It's disappointing, but it's also not unusual. The national Head Start data show that there's usually a big advantage at the beginning after a preschool program that then seems to dissolve over time. It doesn't have to be that way. And when I talk about our improvement plan and what we're going to do, you know, if we raise all the boats, I expect that those students may keep their advantage as well. And I'll show you the statewide tests. So in this one, we get to see the overall in light blue where UPK is and then not UPK. And UPK actually underperformed, not significantly in reading, but somewhat significantly in math. And again, with opt-out and we didn't, you know, I didn't do the calculation of how many students may have opt out last year who had UPK, but we're not seeing the advantage that we saw for sure. Yeah.
How did you determine they did not have any pre-K?
Oh, it's not that. They might have had pre-K. All we're doing is saying they didn't have our UPK.
Okay.
But that's what we've done every year. So it's consistent in that we were comparing to students who may have had another high-quality universal pre-K program, and they still were six months ahead prior. And so it's really basically the same group of students and they just haven't, you know, they've just become in the mix. Okay. So each year, I just show three years' worth of FDR cohort rate means four-year graduation rate. The state under the Every Student Succeeds Act is going to start showing us five- and six-year cohort rates. But for now, this is the four-year rate. And so, you know, we're above 80, which we're happy about. Every cohort is different. We've had that conversation. It's still one of your goals, though of course, we hope to approve every year.
And one of the things I always want to point out on this one is a lot of times the Poughkeepsie Journal will report the district graduation rate. And there's a difference between the district graduation rate and FDR graduation rate, because when they report the district graduation rate, it has all of our out-of-district placements, the children who do not attend FDR High School. So in this report, we're looking at the students that actually attend the school with our teachers.
And that information is available as well.
Yeah.
And, you know, and at Bosse's Beta, they have a rolling system where they don't have students take the exams or graduate until they're ready. And so they're not as attached to that four-year rate. So many of our students at Bosse's do graduate with a high school diploma and a regents diploma.
Six years.
They just don't always make the four-year rate.
Yeah.
So we have, we do maps testing, but we also have an insight report. And so I just want to give you a little bit of that information, again, because it gives a bigger perspective. So we looked at New York State and here's the whole country. So 10.8 million students in kindergarten through grade 12 take the NWEA maps, and that's Northwest Evaluation Association is what NWEA stands for and measures of academic progress is maps. So again, it's growth, our achievement and growth compared to national norms. So this past year, our achievement and growth were both considered average, you know, compared to the rest of the country. Our three-year growth has also been consistently average, and it shows these numbers, and those are all within average range. Again, consistently average for growth and achievement. But there are some outliers that are interesting. So second grade was above average in both subjects, not just by a little. And kindergarten and fourth grade were below in both subjects. And then first grade was above average growth and kindergarten was below average growth in both subjects. And both subjects are reading and math that we test with maps. So we can drill down and teachers have access to finding out, students in particular, where they had weaknesses and where they can grow. And principals have access to data and to be able to have that be actionable. The main reason I want to show this to you is just a bigger perspective. Now, you know, average is nothing to make a party about. But in light of the three through eight, I think it's important to say, across the country, this is considered average. And there really is no test refusal for maps. So they're all taking it in grades K through nine. Okay. So I'm going to get into the sort of prelude to the improvement plan. So a reminder, and I think it's sitting on top of it plus on the screen, Hyde Park Central School District empowers our community to strive for excellence and embrace the opportunities of our globally connected world. So I need to give credit to Melissa Lawson, who used this next phrase with her faculty and her staff on opening day. "We have 180 days of school and that's 180 opportunities to make progress." So we're embracing that as an admin team. And a quote here, "High-quality curriculum is a matter of equity, providing all learners with educational opportunity," which is also, of course, a major initiative for us and part of ESSA. Okay. So we developed this list of what we have, and it's not every single thing in the district that we have, but it's what we have that really supports students in academic achievement, one way or the other. And this list was developed with administrators and also our district leadership team added to it, and that includes teachers and paraprofessionals. So I'm not going to read them all, but I'm going to click them and stop talking. Now, one thing I will do is spell out, I'll read out acronyms.
That was my fault.
Yeah.
I was supposed to do that for you.
So AIS is Academic Intervention Services. RTI is Response to Intervention. DLT, District Leadership Team. BLT, Building Leadership Team. HMS is Havland. PBAS is Positive Behavior, Interventions and Supports. Avid is Advancement by Individual Determination. 4Cs, we're well aware of. SEL is Social Emotional Learning. TCIS is Therapeutic Crisis Intervention for Schools. And I'll explain Safety Care. That's a particular management program to support students in the 811 and 812 Alternately Assess Community-Based Programs. So there's special training for those teachers and teaching assistants. So these are all programs and supports that we've put into place, some recently, some not. So the psychologist, social worker is really a nod to that now we have a full-time psychologist and social worker in each elementary school, but that we do support both psychologists and social workers and guidance counselors, which not all districts do. So we talked about possible gaps, again, with the admin team and then also with district leadership team to get some input from teachers and teaching assistants. So I'm going to go in-depth a little bit in the plan for some of these. So fidelity to the curriculum. We know that we have curriculum that's been very successfully used for student achievement in other places, that's evidence-based, that is used in other districts around us with success. And so you always have to ask yourself with curriculum, are we using it with fidelity? Are we doing it the exact way that this thing is designed? Because you only get the results when you use it the right way. And, you know, to really look at, is there more professional development needed in this program or that program? And more alignment and accountability. Making the most of instructional time. You know, it's a common complaint that we don't have enough time to do all the things we want to do with students, so we just want to make sure that it's uninterrupted. You know, 60 minutes of math, that nothing should really interrupt that. 120 minutes of language arts, nothing should interrupt that. And then how are we making the most of all the time in between? Kindergarten through second grade phonics. A need was determined that we don't, that we needed to have more explicit direct instruction in phonics in the early grades. So there was a very democratic process. I talked about it last spring. All teachers were really involved to choose a program. We're providing a full day of training on November 5th on our training day for all K-2 teachers. And so that, you know, we're looking to really address, you know, some of those weaknesses in early reading with this program.
And that should, that's my error. It should be K-2 phonics in progress year one. So one of the gaps we recognized was we did not have a strong phonics program in our literacy program. It was there, but it wasn't explicit. And all the research shows you need explicit phonics instruction. So Jen led the team to select a phonics program. So it is in progress year one. It's actually being implemented this year. Instead of progress years, it's my typos on that side.
And then the action plan is something that obviously we're putting into place now this year. Not that we have any other plans, but this is very specific, and you'll see in a moment, about the three through eight test scores. Common protocols for data analysis. We do a lot of data analysis in faculty meetings and department meetings, but we're really looking to have some common protocols that every teacher experiences a certain number of times a year, looking at certain data. And we have progress monitoring tools within maps, but we haven't always made the time or insisted that everyone use it in a certain way. So it's been an invitation and we need to make it more of our regular practice. And protocols for how collaboration time and team time are used, you know, to do some of this work. We don't have common planning time for teachers at the high school right now. We do with the middle school. We talked about that half-hour collaboration time at the elementary, and then Havland has a whole additional period and the high school's not right now. And social emotional learning supports, mental health treatment for students. You know, we may have enough full-time staff. That doesn't mean that students are getting all the supports and services that they need either in or outside the school. And we don't have, you know, regular after-school programs or, you know, it was brought up that we could use more enrichment programs. So again, this was teachers, paraprofessionals, and administrators. Also came up that there's some discrepancy in vocabulary use for some of the materials we're using as compared to the assessment. So that's a place we can go and look and make sure that that's aligned. And then, you know, the opt-out rate. So the buy-in for assessments, students and family, you know, buying into taking those assessments. So here's our action plan right now. This is really in early stages, again, 180 opportunities. So our goal is, it may not look like much, but having 5% growth in language arts and math over one year is actually really ambitious. But we think we can do it and we should. So I know you've had this conversation as a board. Sometimes you put up a goal and you worry about, can I meet it? That's not the point. You know, it should be reachable. It is reachable. We've certainly increased by 5% here and there in different places and more than that. So that's our goal. And as measured by the assessments that we'll be getting next summer. And these are just a few specifics on fidelity to the curriculum. We already drafted some look-for documents. And that's to help administrators like myself who are doing walkthroughs or in classrooms, you know, what should we be looking for to see that alignment, to see that? And these are some examples. ICAN statements are really how the standards are explained in child-friendly language. Is the agenda posted? Is there an objective that's connected to a standard to assessment? So there's already a system at Havland and at the high school, and we see systems like that at elementary, and we should be looking for those and seeing that they're up to date and connected to what's happening in the classroom. And data analysis. So using, again, system-wide, consistent data analysis protocols during these times that teachers have to look at student work, tracking the data, training on the tools, training administrators and teachers. And I'll say, we already have Victoria Curry is coming from Bosse's next week to meet with our instructional administrators, to show us some of these tools and to work with us. And it's really about systematizing, because principals have already been doing a lot of this work. But it's, you know, first quarter, what is every principal and teacher in the district going to be looking at and with what tool? And really aligning our practices so we're all rowing in the same direction. And really aligning our practices so we're all rowing in the same direction. And time analysis. I say e-school data because for the first time at the elementary level, we're really linked in where every minute of the day has a teacher of record and a subject that they're supposed to be working on as opposed to the fluid kind of day that we used to have in elementary. So again, just making sure that that, that time is not interrupted and being used for standards-based instruction. And, you know, and there's a, a real bent here toward, this is an administrative goal. So this is really, you know, what the leadership is going to be doing to bring greater consistency, alignment, to hold the system accountable for all of the generous support that you've offered as a board over the years and, you know, purchase these programs and supports for us and hire staff for us so that we can really make the most of it. Because I, I know that, you know, our kids can be successful, our teachers, you know, are, are great. And there's no reason we can't meet our goals. All right, any questions?
So one question, Aviva, as far as the MAPS, do we test fall, winter and spring? Or just fall and spring?
We, it's mandatory to do fall and spring for everyone. For winter, we have all students who are receiving academic intervention supports. And many of our schools have moved to all-school winter as well and looking at that data. So we've just made mandatory the two.
Thank you.
As of now. You're welcome.
Any other questions?
You had mentioned that the opt-out rate for three through five is much higher than the state, but I didn't see that in there.
No, um, it depends on the building. So Haveland is much higher than the overall state and Roffler Smith is higher than the overall state. The others are not.
No, I know, but when you were comparing the three through five data against the state, you said.
Only one of our buildings is much higher. Yeah.
Thank you, Aviva. And I just want to thank the administrative team. This was the first time where, you know, we just really said we're going to make one action plan for all of us so that it's not one building principal trying to say, well, I'm going to try and do this and I'm going to try and do this. We spent a lot of time developing an action plan. It's, it's much more fleshed out. We've written it as a SMART goal. We still have some tweaking to do. But it is a team goal. All of the administrators were given, are giving some of the exact same information at faculty meetings, starting in, at their October meeting. So some of them have already had their faculty meetings. We all have, are sharing the action plan so that it's six administrators, all of the content directors and all of the, the rest of the instructional team with one goal, sharing it at the same time and going to follow the same action plan. So I think there was a greater level of confidence as a team that if we're all sending the same message and, and really looking at this, it was better to do so as an entire district versus, you know, one school versus another coming up with a different plan. And we presented all this to the district leadership team, the instructional portion of the district leadership team as well, so.
Aviva, we used to get years back comparisons to equivalent districts rather than to the state. And that might be more helpful. For instance, if somebody brings the Poughkeepsie Journal to me and says, look, you're, there's only one district that got better scores and, you know, that got worse scores than you, that was Poughkeepsie, which happens to be true in, in that article. Wouldn't it be nice to be able to say yes, but? Or can?
Right.
Yeah.
Hopefully, hopefully the numbers would be the same.
Yeah, no, unfortunately they're not. Every time that we showed comparison to like districts, I was the one who did it and did the work. So I know exactly which districts we used. We can do it again. If you looked at the Dutchess County rate, we were always close to Dover, Wibertuck and Beacon. And we also added in Walkill, Washingtonville and a few others in the reports that I had done. And we, we have discovered that we're lagging behind, so, in some of those. So we can put that slide up there. But the reason why there was a concerted effort to do a district-wide action plan is we're, we're not gaining the ground that we want to see even when compared with like districts. And I know some people say that the demographics of Beacon might be changing. But the reality is their, their poverty rate is still equivalent. They're, they're, they have an influx of English language learners. So, you know, their demographics are, are still, keep us in that comparable. So, so the good news is there's a unified action plan. We could put together that data. I, I have it and it takes just a few minutes to update it. But even just looking at the three or four schools that we compared ourselves with, with Dutchess County, we're lagging behind.
And I guess the other question is, how useful is the data, say, at the middle school? If there's 40% or better?
Right, right. So I don't think it's useful in terms of helping individual students. It's not really designed for that, but it's, it, you know, in, in many ways. I mean, again, this is because this report is public, it's in the newspaper. It's important to take time to talk about it every year. I don't think it's that useful when that many kids are refusing the test. So, you know, the MAPS is more useful, certainly, because they are all taking it. It's compared to the whole country, so at least we have that information. And we, of course, have local assessments and finals and things like that that we use. But it's part of our PR. It's part of how we look as a district. And so I think certainly whatever efforts have more students take that test and therefore I think we will perform better and, and knowing that we still can do better.
And Doug, to your point, the one thing that we haven't compared is I, we haven't taken those like districts and said, what are their opt-out rates? And that can vary greatly. You know, New Paltz is still like 80% opt-out rate, you know? So I, that would be an interesting exercise to take a couple of those schools and see what are their opt-out rates? Maybe it's a lot less. I, I, I know for a fact that in some of our eastern schools, we call them the E-five, you know, Dover, Wibertuck, Pine Plains, they're not seeing, you know, the high opt-out rates that we see. I don't know, what is it? I don't, I'm not sure what.
As I recall, because my kids go there.
But I know that Haveland is still a very high opt-out rate, so.
Any other questions? Thanks, Aviva.
Thanks.
May I stay up for the next one?
Safety.
Safety plan.
He takes care of the textbooks and the alarms.
So even though Bob Bloom couldn't be here tonight, I just want to acknowledge that he's my co-chair on District SAVE. He's such an expert on safety. I'm very grateful for his assistance in this work. He is, of course, very active at the county and the state level. And he just keeps us current and, and really helps us be in compliance and keep our students and staff safe. So I just want to thank Bob here publicly for that. All right, so this is our process for tonight. It is now required that this, that there be an annual review and adoption of the district-wide safety plan. So you started in August 22nd at your meeting, where there was discussion of the draft plan, which now has to include this memorandum of understanding with the Town of Hyde Park Police for the school resource officers. We already had the MOU. We've had it for, you know, since we've had our SROs. It didn't have to be in the plan before, and now it is. The public comment period is over. And this is tonight where the plan can be adopted. So this is a new process. So the dates above mean the dates in the previous slide. There's now a new requirement to certify that staff have undergone training in these areas. And we have, and I have the dates there. It was all opening day. We actually had planned the mental health training before we knew it was required. I don't know what other people, how other people manage that. And we're expecting new safety laws. So we've always had building-level safety plans. They're confidential. They've already actually been submitted early to the state and certified. And we have a district office safety plan and safety team that includes Hyde Park Elementary staff and also this building. We meet three times a year at a minimum. And that's something that I think helps the staff here feel really valued as well. So here's some of the new laws. So this one prohibits school staff from carrying a firearm. Our SROs are allowed to carry firearms. So this is just New York making clear that this is New York. Chapter 19, so this became effective the end of August. Red flag law, which allows families, law enforcement, school administrators, specifically mentions principals in the law, to petition a court to suspend access to guns for a person in crisis. So can actually send police to take someone's guns, even if they're registered legally, if they're in crisis. So this Education Law 20801A is still in public comment period. It may have been in the last couple of days approved. And this really outlines the roles and responsibilities of an SRO compared to building administration. We've already embedded this, this was already in our MOU. And the stakeholder input is, has already been gathered this year from the posting for 30 days and also at our SAVE committee that has first responders, building representatives and community members. We did bring it there for review. And so you're seeing the result tonight. So at the time when I wrote this, it was an upcoming SAVE meeting. The meeting has taken place. They got to review this report, actually this presentation, as well as the MOU. And again, the 30-day comment period has finished. And it's now a part of the safety plan. There will be some data collection changes. We're getting more information. And so I, I might have mentioned this last spring. There were some audits of school safety across the state. We were not, one of the districts audited. But there were a lot of findings and, and these laws are really coming out of that concern at the state level, that districts are not following the laws. We are in good standing. We're still implementing all of the new guidance as it becomes available. But there were none of the things, the findings that came out did not apply to us. We were in good standing. So next steps, again, we're just, I'm going to review all of this when I get, you know, so I'll get memos or Greer will get a memo or new information first. And my first step is I share it with Bob and we meet and we talk about it. And then we bring it to SAVE to discuss with the whole group. And we share with administrators. And we'll bring you any changes as they occur.
Can you address the building plans that are going to be on the next agenda?
Oh, yeah. So the building-level plans are confidential. So the board has the opportunity to approve them and you will see them in executive content. They really can't be shared with the public. So just know that, that they have already been submitted to the state, but you'll have them at the next board meeting, so you can review them. But again, they're confidential because that has, you know, what our response plans are going to be in an emergency in the buildings. And that's it. Oh, any questions?
Any questions? Okay.
All right.
Thank you, Aviva. That concludes our presentations. Can I have a motion to open public participation?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Motion carries. If anybody would like to address the board, please go to the microphone and state your name. Seeing none, public participation is now closed. Oh, you got logged out? I don't feel so bad. So, Board Subcommittee Reports? Any committees that met?
Which one? Well, as you know, the Audit Committee met. And was that before last meeting? I guess I'm, I'm getting confused. But anyway, the result was the presentation we had tonight. We had reviewed everything. And I noticed that you all didn't have a lot of questions. But don't worry, we asked a lot in our meeting, so we got some stuff. But I was really pleased with that. I was really pleased with our audit.
The Policy Committee met. I thought you were going to do that.
No, I'm sorry, it's bad.
Lively discussion, quite long about harassment policies and definitions of various things. It's pretty difficult stuff to get it right. And I still think that it's going to change because of the, I think in the next Supreme Court, some definitions are going to change. So we may be seeing changes to that. But as usual, good support. Everybody was there. Aviva did a great job with all the, the policies. And we've got a nice schedule going every couple of weeks, so we're doing good.
Any other reports? Okay, on to Board Goals. We're going to go through it again one more time for Rachel to weigh in.
Did you, did you have anything you wanted to say, talk to us about?
I don't really have anything that I would, like, that I could think of. I feel like everything was pretty decent, like, good enough as it is. Like, you guys had a very good discussion about it as well, so. That's just why, that's how I looked at it.
You're so wise. But okay.
You want to just click through them?
Speaking of board members attending events, I just want to, uh, one of the board goals is, you know, and that was one of the lengthy discussions. And I, I just want to thank you, Rachel, for your due diligence to cover all of the buildings and give equal playing time to the building. And, and just hearing your reports and hearing how many things you go to as a student, as a student board member, so thank you.
No problem.
So, I'll just kind of show them. For the Board Administrative Operations, I do think we should have a couple of board members work with a couple administrators to plan this retreat. So I was just wondering if we had a couple of board members willing to, to work on that with the administrators to?
And would it be good to maybe have the, the board? I didn't think of this when we talked about this, Jeff, but the board members who are on the Strategic Planning Committee?
Probably. That would be me.
Jeez, I shouldn't have done that.
Sure.
Who is it, Perry, Mike and, and Jeff?
No, it's Perry. Ed is now on DLT.
Oh, so who's on DLT now?
Perry, me and, and Ed.
DLT or Strategic Planning?
Well, it's.
It's the same thing, yeah. But I thought Mike was on it.
I thought I was on the DLT.
Hold on.
Oh, my God.
Okay.
So the problem is we do that at Reorg.
Okay, it's me, Mike and Ed.
Honey, I thought I was on every.
Do you want to be on it, Mike?
I guess I got booted.
Do you want to be on the planning, to plan the board retreat?
Yeah, sure.
Okay. And, and you'll put a couple administrators together?
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Work on that?
Carl, I don't know what happened. This was at Reorg, I don't know.
I did my best.
Okay. Go on to Adminis- Budget Administration. No one has any changes? Go on to Technology. There's no changes? Okay, so we'll present that for the next meeting for approval. And on to NISBA Convention, Proposed Bylaws and Amendments. I'm going to turn the mic over to Denise to run this section.
Okay, it's long. So everybody comfortable? I hear you.
Looking at all these administrators who have to be there breaking early for all the little ones, so don't, don't hesitate.
Don't worry, I have to go to work for another two hours after this, so.
Oh, no.
Okay, so there are, there are 26 proposed resolutions for voting on at the annual meeting. And whether we support NISBA advocating for something with legislation or, or not. And, but there's some that, that they've, that they've, that are up for, for proposed that people can go and talk to them, like after, you know, that they've decided not to put forward. So I'll say to those when we get to them. But I thought what I'd do is I'd just do a quick reading of each one. We've got them all up there. And then I just want to take a consensus, a quick yes or no, whether you, you know, how you all want me, you know, whether you want me to say that we support it or not. whether you, you know, how you all want me, you know, whether you want me to say that we support it or not. And then, if you have questions about it, then I'll read more into it. We can look at the rationale and stuff. Does that make sense to everybody?
Okay.
Okay. All right. Number one, am I reading this right? That Article 9 of the bylaws of the New York State School Board Association shall be amended to expand membership on the Resolutions Committee to include a representative from the New York State Caucus of Black School Board Members. How, how do you want to do this? Just do a, a, a show of hands of whether we support it or not? Or does anybody have any questions?
I think maybe we should just go through it. And if someone has an objection to it, then we'll speak out and say, can we talk about that?
So, it's a yes, otherwise?
Yeah. Is that agreement with the board?
Yep.
Okay. Any questions about that? Okay. Resolve that the New York State School Board Association take a leadership role in encouraging school boards to develop successful strategies for integrating respect for differences into the educational experience. In carrying out this mission, NISBA shall encourage school boards to ensure that the importance of acceptance to others who are unique and different because of racial, ethnic, gender, sexual orientation, gender identity, disability status, or religious differences as part of the curriculum. Also, invite discussion among students, parents, staff, and the community about how hatred and bigotry based on race, ethnicity, gender, sexual orientation, gender identity, disability status, and religion endanger the pluralistic and diversity principles for which this nation stands. This is a, that's a long one. I don't, I think she wanted me to, do you want me to read all of these?
I don't...
I don't have to. That's fine with me. Yeah, there's 24 of them. Okay, so...
Go to the next page.
One, okay, then, let's just do, these, some of these are quick. I'm not going to read. That was a real long one. That NISBA support the full restoration of state and local tax deductibility.
What does that mean?
In 2017, the exemptions, I think exemptions are, excuse me, deductions that people could claim on their tax returns was limited to under $10,000. And they called that, that salts. I forget what it was exactly.
State and local...
State and local tax.
Say it again.
State and local tax.
Thank you. State and local tax. So, they're, they're trying to get that changed.
It's your ability, it's our ability to be able to deduct what we pay in local and school taxes from our federal income tax. That exemption has been limited...
As well as state income tax on, included in there. It's state income tax.
State income tax as well, yeah. So, it's, it's been limited to $10,000.
Yeah. But, so, NISBA has the power to override?
No, 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 no.
Recommend, to recommend. Positions that they're taking to, to work toward.
So, this is, do we want them to take the position to help?
Right. It would be nice, but not...
Right. I wish, right? Wouldn't that be awesome?
Wait a minute. This is a powerful organization.
Yeah. It is a powerful organization, just not that powerful, right? NISBA to support proposals to require the state to fund all state mandated school meal programs and practices. NISBA support proposals to allow boards of education to determine if their buildings will be used as polling places.
Yes.
Thank you, Greer.
Sorry. I don't even get a vote here. I'm going to be a board member. I feel I could have more influence.
You live in Arlington, right?
Yes.
Oh, boy. Create a task force to study current requirements, cost trends, and other aspects of special education systems and make recommendations for the future of special education delivery in New York. Miss gracious. I'm trying, I'm going to read so fast. NISBA support legislation that would require the independent hearing officer in a 30-20A hearing to accept the penalty sought by the district if there is a finding of guilt. I don't, okay.
Okay. Good luck.
I vote for that one.
NISBA support the requirement that local school districts continue to make determinations as to the substantial equivalency of education delivered in non-public schools. Yes. NISBA oppose, did you like that?
Didn't they vote against that last year?
Wasn't that the thing, Greer, you presented?
Yes. Do you want, do we don't want to support that?
I don't think we want to support that. The equiv, that whole equivalency thing that Greer, Greer would have to go to...
So, we are all in agreement?
Right, no, you're right.
Without any authority to make any changes.
So, we're all in agreement on seven?
Seven is against. We are, we, okay. NISBA oppose legislative curriculum mandates. I could use some, I don't know, input on that.
I'll just say, I think they're talking about legislative. So, it wouldn't mean that the Board of Regents wouldn't make recommendations. They're talking about the legislature telling, that's what I think they're, to, that no one can change the curriculum.
It says, "In New York State, the responsibility to establish curriculum is vested with local school districts. While that curriculum needs to align with the state learning standards set by the State Education Department, leaving curriculum decisions at the local levels ensures that the community has input on how those standards are implemented and that the process is nimble enough to respond to changing circumstances."
Oh, so it's trying to go away that we, they don't have to mandate all the individual things?
Right. Oppose legislative curriculum mandates. So, are we in agreement? Four. Okay.
Well, you don't know how to clear a line.
I know. You haven't seen anything yet.
Aviva, you think that one would be a good one, right?
Yeah. I mean, I, I...
We want to...
Yes, it's, it's very cumbersome when the rules are coming from left, right, and center.
Yes.
Yeah, right. We want to, we want to be a little in charge, right?
And the, and the State Ed Department. Right. Because that's even outside the State Ed Department.
And the teachers will get a little freedom to...
NISBA, sorry. NISBA support proposals to authorize municipalities to install speed zone cameras in school zones. Okay. NISBA support legislation to eliminate the limit on BOSI's district superintendent compensation.
I thought that already happened.
Yeah.
Did it?
Yeah.
So, maybe they'll be taking it out. So, that's already done.
It's done some. I think that there's, let me just...
10. Let me see.
Didn't they raise the limit? Raising it at a 6% increments over the next two years to approximately 208. After four years, the cap, the salary cap will still be less than most component superintendent salaries in many areas of the state. So, there's limits on it now. There are still limits.
Yeah.
They've allowed it to rise, but not to what truly is a fair market value. Yeah.
Okay. So, are we in support of that?
Yes.
Okay. NISBA support legislation to eliminate the limit, oh, I said that, I'm sorry. I'm in the wrong box. NISBA support requiring notification to districts by the courts of restraining orders prohibiting contact with or between students enrolled in the district and the parents or those in parental relation to students. Support, that NISBA support legislation that will expand the definition of child safety zones in the educational law of New York State by adding criteria that pertains to neighborhoods with high crime rates or with deteriorating vacant buildings that create safety hazards. Yes? NISBA support legisla, legislative action in the regulation of vapor products, including consumption, manufacturing, distribution, and advertisement. NISBA support federal and state legislative regulatory action in addressing the educational and fiscal needs attendant to the increase of unoccupy, unaccompanied minors in New York State.
Yes.
Okay. All right. We're almost there. We're halfway there. NISBA seek to initiate legislation at the state or federal level that would provide for regulations to identify proper practices and enforce sanctions for improper, improper practices related to the participation of parent advocates at committees on special education meetings and hearings.
Yes.
Oh, I'm, I think I'd have to understand what that means.
Okay. That's number...
What's that, you don't?
15.
So, parent advocates play a vital function in mediating and solving issues between school districts and parents. In fact, federal law guarantees the rights of the parent of a student with a disability to have an advocate attend and participate in the IEP process under blah, 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 blah. Team IPA, I E P team may include individuals who have knowledge or special expertise regarding the children or at the discretion of the parents of the agency. For the agency, a parent advocate creates, provides, and coordinates services and activities with families and communities that foster strength, healthy living, and overall well-being. Every parent deserves to have an advocate if they see fit. However, an advocate must be held accountable for his or her conduit, or conduct. A school code of conduct is not enough. The point is that these advocates come to these meetings and say things without any repercussions, without any guarantee of fact, without, they, they can come and advocate in any way that they feel appropriate without, with very few with any restraints. And that's the issue. So, we have, and, and it's happened. I mean, it's gone as far as the Supreme Court with some cases of, of parent advocates who come and say things that aren't questions. Aren't, you know, they're, they're, they're going unanswered, so...
And I'll say that our parent advocates are very appropriate.
Yeah.
No, I'm just saying, in case anybody's watching, the ones that we've had.
I'm just worried that it, it could stifle parent advocates. Because parent advocates are important.
I think it holds them accountable, which is not...
I'm a little bit worried at how far they go and stifling it.
How far do you want them to be, other than truthful and fair?
Well, it depends on what they've come up with. That's what I'm saying. It's a, it's a very broad statement.
It's not, it's, it's not...
I'm just saying, important parent advocates are extremely important.
Yep.
And I'm a little bit concerned that they can go too far and try to...
Well, the, the resolution is that we would support NISBA to seek, to initiate legislation at the state, federal level. I mean, would you be...
So, are you concerned that the state is going to initiate legislation that would be inappropriate?
Sometimes, yes. You asked.
Okay. So, what's the consensus?
So, is the answer to do nothing?
No, not to do nothing. I just don't, I just want a little bit, I think it's kind of open.
So, we, we will have a delegate there. There is a process in which to suggest an alternate resolution or a modified resolution. Personally, I don't think this resolution needs to be changed. I think it's exact, I think it, I think it needs to go forward.
Focuses on improper practices...
Yeah.
By the parent advocate, not, you know, proper.
Yeah, proper, we, yeah, we, we...
I've been in the special ed meetings enough for all the years that sometimes what someone considers improper practices may not be.
Well...
So, I'm just saying that it's, it's a slippery slope. That's all I'm saying.
Well, and, and again, we're only, we're only voting to whether or not we want to support NISBA's, I, you know, to seek initial legislation at the state or level. Like, it's, it's not the legislation.
I know. We just say it's going to be a slippery slope. That's all.
Okay. So, shall we vote?
I support as written.
Okay. So, we have a consensus. Okay.
I support. I understand what Jeff is saying, and it's a valuable role. But I think what this is saying is that to at least give them the right to spell out best practices and, and some kind of boundaries. Right. That's, I understand what Jeff is saying. Yep. I would suspect that any school board that is making this proposal, because these come from school boards.
This is number, number 15?
Yeah, this one's coming from Wilson School Board.
Right.
They have probably had enough experiences that they say something's going to be done here. We can't continue with this. Yep.
Okay. Next one, support NISBA's, NISBA to urge the Commissioner of Education to increase the maximum age of participation in inclusion sports for alternat, alternately assess students. Yeah? Anyone?
What does that mean?
So, there are sports programs that are developed for students with special needs. And they're an inclusive process. And currently, I think the limit is, well, let's see if I get it right here in front of me. It's either, it goes to, it goes to the number of years, let's see. The point is, students with special needs can be in school longer to the age of 21.
The end of the 20, they can, yeah, it says, it says to increase...
This would allow them to continue to play in those sports as long as they're in the school program. The current requirements, I think, restrict them...
Four years.
So, those are specific for the inclusion sports, not the general?
Yes. This is not, yeah, this is strictly for the, specifically for the inclusion sports.
Okay. Thank you all. Almost done. NISBA support reducing the flexibility provided to charter schools for hiring teachers without a valid New York State teaching certificate.
I think it's a good idea.
I think definitely.
I have a comment that I would make, eliminating the opportunity for them to hire students, teachers.
Okay. So, we want to support this, right? Okay. Just want to make sure all my checks are on the right side. Okay. NISBA support legislation that would increase the penalties against any business that sells vaping products to or adult purchasing vaping products for any person who is underage.
Yes. Particularly in this market, or this climate.
So, we, but we are limiting now it's only for nicotine vaping products. Because the state has already ruled out most of all the other stuff.
That NISBA produce and widely recommend the adoption of a sample board policy stating that members who have been newly elected to serve as officers will participate in at least one accredited officer training. Person widely recommend the adoption of a board policy. So, I can support that.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, don't we, that's what I was asking. Don't we already do that?
It's not, it's not, it, you don't have to attend? And it's not pushed that you have to attend?
Oh.
Well, the only thing you, you are required to attend the fiscal training.
Within one year.
No, that, no, this is for the officers. It's a means for president and vice president.
Right.
Yeah.
This is...
The big guys.
And you don't have to go and it's not pushed.
I could, I can support the recommendation. Resolve that NISBA produce and widely recommend, did I just read that one?
Number 20.
No, it's a different one.
Oh, okay. I'm sorry. Produce and widely recommend the adoption of a sample board policy stating that all Board of Education members will each year participate in at least one new training, which has been approved by that board.
Doesn't it sound like a board goal?
I think it sounds like a board, yeah.
Is it? So, why would we have any objection to it from a statewide standpoint? Realize that some boards don't operate as well as this board operates.
It's true. I don't, I don't, I don't, I don't oppose it because it's a recommendation that we make of our policy.
Who typed this up? You, Denise?
You what?
You typed it up.
What? No, it was, I did not type it up. It was, it was pulled right from the whole thing, I know.
Oh, it's a typo.
Yeah, I got a two and a three in there.
You can, I will take it, I will take it.
You're doing a school-related thing.
But, um.
Twenty-one?
I'd say yes.
Yeah.
Okay, NISBA oppose lowering the age of eligibility for a commercial driver's license required to be, to be a bus driver from twenty-one to eighteen years old.
So I think this is being proposed because of the difficulty getting bus drivers. And so this was.
The, the NISBA, actually, this is, this is on the.
It's actually from the New York State School Board Association Directors.
This is, this is one of the ones that were not recommended by the Resolution Committee for Adoption. So this is one of the resolutions that are being put forward that they've, that they've polled, but I guess they kind of have like this last thing, if enough people go up there and talk, it can, it be given new life at, at the meeting.
I vote no. I don't, I wouldn't support that.
You wouldn't support that?
One. Eighteen-year-old driving a busload of kids, I don't think they're mature enough to.
See, but that's what.
That's what I'm saying. They're opposing eighteen-year-old, they want it to be twenty-one.
Oh, they're opposing it, then I support it.
Okay.
I, I, I don't recommend it, I'm sorry.
Okay. Yeah, it is, I know, and I'm sorry, there's just a few more.
I was thinking the same thing as Mike.
I know, okay, right, I was thinking the same thing.
The seniors are eighteen.
I was just gonna say, the seniors could be driving their classmates to school.
I would trust you to drive.
That NISBA support legislation to allow retired law enforcement officers to work in public schools as security guards, directors of security, or supervisors of security without effect on their pensions and without pension waivers.
Well, so, so this is one that, that the.
That was up last year.
NISBA has chosen not to.
Support.
Forward. I believe we should put this forward. And I don't know that it's as much of an issue here as I know that it's a bigger issue south of here, where they get, have more and more difficulty getting security personnel. And the issue is that law enforcement cannot, their limited is what their income can be in, in these, in, in security positions. I think it's something like thirty thousand dollars per year. And the problem is that if you need qualified security personnel, probably law enforcement may be your best people to be getting, and, and it's becoming more and more difficult. I know the school district, it was put up by Hewlett Woodmere School down in Long Island. I know the director of facilities down there, and they're having a real challenge trying to fill security positions.
So we want, we want them to bring that forward.
We'd like to, I would, you know.
We'd like to need to push it forward.
Push this is, when she's there.
See what I can do. NISBA advocate for state action to create appropriate parameters for social media and electronic communications between students and school district employees. State action to create appropriate parameters for social media. Do we want this?
I would agree, I know, I would say that this is more of a school district.
Yeah, this is more of a local decision.
Having, having at that level do something so generic that it's gonna, it's gonna limit, you know, stuff.
Well, what's interesting is that a number of the resolutions that we just read spoke about NISBA creating sample policy. To me, this is a better application, where again, instead of, so NISBA is looking for the state to take action.
Mm-hmm.
I would think that it might be a better, I'd rather see NISBA take action and write a sample policy.
Yes, I agree with that.
That could be used by board members.
Well, again, this was, this was proposed by Locust Valley School Board.
Yep.
And this is a resolution that is not recommended by the Resolutions Committee for Adoption. And their, their explanation of that was ultimately believed that this was an issue that could and should be addressed by local Boards of Education without state intervention.
But a sample policy from the NISBAs.
Right, and that, but that's my point, is that's where NISBA, NISBA could do the, a service to the Boards of Education.
Right.
By developing a sample policy that we could all consider and adopt or modify if necessary.
No, but develop is interesting.
I have a kit here to tell you how to present a resolution.
Yes, I've got, actually have that same kit.
Good.
Right here. Okay, three more, stick with me.
Three more.
Okay, NISBA advocate for action that requires school districts to provide a professional development program related to the ethical practices and protocols employees should follow when using social media and electronic communications.
Again, that's something that.
Advocate for action that requires school districts. So.
Sounds like an unfunded mandate.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm, I know, I, I again would say the same as above. Okay, so against?
Yeah.
Okay. NISBA advocate for an update to the New York State Education's Department's educator, Educators Code of Ethics to include principles related to proper use of technology in fostering positive learning experiences for children. That's not school principles, for anybody who's listening. I don't, and I didn't understand this one, to be honest, Perry, I don't think.
Oh, I'm sorry, I was, you're on twenty-five?
Twenty-five. All right, let me just.
Well, what is the update? How to include principles related to?
So it does not address student and teacher educational experiences and communications in digital world.
Ultimately felt the language.
I mean, it's something a teacher has to come up with, as they develop technology in their classroom.
Right, so I would, are we against?
Yeah.
Okay, the last one. NISBA support legislation that prevents the accumulation of exorbitant costs to schools associated with impartial hearings, independent evaluations, compens, I'm getting tired.
Compensatory.
Compensatory damages and attorney fees associated with formal due process complaints. Support legislation that prevents accumulation of exorbitant costs to schools associated with these things.
How do they plan to do that?
I don't know.
Right, like, it's the law. So someone else paying for it, or.
Yeah, I don't know, I mean, I don't know what they're, let me see what it says.
How they do it, that, that support?
Yeah, how they do it.
Let them figure it out.
Yeah, just to increase your taxes.
Okay, so is that a yes?
Increase your state taxes, that's fine.
Okay. Thank you all very, very much for, for listening and going through that exercise.
Thank you.
If you have the opportunity, the one that we did not agree to, which was seven.
Seven.
Which was the idea of the, uh, local school districts continue to make determinations as to the substantial equivalency of educational delivered in our public schools. I, if you have the opportunity to advocate, I think that it should be done, but it should be done by, at the state level, not by the local level. That this is something that SED should take responsibility for, as they do ensuring that we provide education. So it's oversight. So let's not, let's make, let's not make the local district the enforcer, let's make SED the enforcer.
Okay, I can advocate for that.
Okay.
All right, thank you.
Board discussion.
Sitting at a whole meeting.
That was the last thing on the board discussion, but for the next meeting, there was an, an email that came out from on-board asking for SED seeks input on graduation standards. And there's some questions that they're asking input for, and I thought we as a board could probably talk about what we would want to answer on those. What do we want children to know and be able to do before they graduate? How do we want them to demonstrate their knowledge and skills? I just thought it would be, probably good that we as a district came back with answers. So, so we'll have that put on the board discussion for the next meeting.
Yeah, and there's lots of stuff floating out there around changing the graduation requirements by the Board of Regents, so, you know, if you wanted to poke around, there's a lot of stuff, they're, they're looking at changing the graduation requirement, so. Lot of forums coming up in the region.
I'll look at that.
Okay, can I have a motion for the consent agenda? So moved.
Second.
Any discussion?
Avery, did you mention the donation of the dictionaries in your report?
I did not.
No?
I, I was on your superintendent's report, but I don't think you mentioned it.
Right, and we were supposed to have somebody here from the Rotary to talk about it, did they? Right? And they weren't here, so, I think because they weren't here. But I'll just, you know, having formerly been in the Rotary, every year they, the Hyde Park Rotary donates dictionaries to every single third grade student. And I know in the past, they've had some conversations about, you know, is a dictionary still a viable thing to give a student? And I will say that, you know, hands down, once they go through the discussion and go into the classrooms and hand them out and see the letters that the students write, they still want to do this, and the classrooms still believe it's a very wonderful gift that the Rotary provides. So on behalf of the Rotary, thank you. And again, I, I missed it on the under superintendent's report because I was expecting to see somebody, but that's okay.
I would also want to just comment on the personnel agenda that is the resignation of Jill Paracella, who has been our energy, what's her title, Energy Educator Program Manager. This goes back, it's not energy education anymore, it's, well.
Synergistics.
Synergistics.
Yeah.
You know, and, you know, though, I certainly had my, my differences with her at times and, and some of the things that we had to do, I think that she has some responsibility for the quality of the program and, and the money that the district saved as a result of it. So it'll be, it'll be a new step for us.
Yes, yes, and she was with us for four years, I believe.
Actually, July of two thousand thirteen.
Oh, wow, okay, longer. And she's, she's actually taken a full-time job, so we wish her well, and she's actually going to be with an organization that we do a lot of business with, so, good for her for getting, she was ready for the, the move to full-time, and she will be employed as an engineer.
Any other discussion? All those in favor? Posed? Motion carries. Have a motion for eleven point one, Special Education placements.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Motion carries. Okay, I have a motion for eleven point two, the safety plan.
So moved. Second. Whatever you want.
Whatever.
You choose, Jay.
Any discussion?
I would just echo Aviva's comments in reference to Bob Blum. I mean, Bob is, he is the safety guru, certainly of this area and known throughout the state. So we've got a real asset there, and, and our program shows it. I mean.
Actually, other districts don't even do some of the stuff we do. I'm amazed that he's able to get it through.
But nobody's saying that.
All those in favor? Motion carries. I have a motion for eleven point three, two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty Booster Club approval.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Motion carries. Motion for eleven point four, is school lunch fund balance use.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Motion carries. Okay, I have a motion for eleven point five, New York State OSC Audit Corrective Action Plan.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Motion carries. A motion for eleven point six, lease extension for Bright Days.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Motion carries. Okay, I have a motion for eleven point seven, stipulation of agreement, Hyde Park, HPC S UEA.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Motion carries. Okay, I have a motion for eleven point eight, staff, for support staff retirement.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Motion carries. Okay, nobody here, but I have a motion for public participation.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Right, yeah, Aviva's moved.
You got me, okay.
Second.
All those in favor? Anybody would like to talk to the board? Okay.
Scan the audience.
Seeing none, public participation is now closed. There's no other matters deemed necessary by the board. There's no need for a second executive session. Can I have a motion to adjourn?
So, second.
All those in favor? Motion carries.